Great for the pen on.
Thanks.
All right.
Such as you like.
Don't be more soon.
Yeah.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Hey, welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday, June 11, 2024. This meeting is called to order. Margaret, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Mercado.
What is it?
Commissioner Revitelli. Commissioner Rodby.
Here.
Commissioner Subsuzi. Subsuzi. Commissioner Sade.
Present.
Chair Higman.
Here.
We do have a quorum tonight.
Okay. Uh, now to the order of the agenda. Are there any commissioners that would like to request changes to the order of the agenda? There's much change we could enact in the order. All right. Next, we'll move the meeting procedures. The city of Santa Fe remains committed for all to participate in our public meetings. I want to welcome all that are making the time this evening to participate. Each member of the public may provide three minutes for comment. This will ensure we have the opportunity to hear from everyone. Margaret, would you please tell us how public comment will work this evening?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Higman. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed to YouTube and through Zoom. Viewers can watch it directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda that was posted or by dialing 669-444-9171 and entering the following meeting code, 840-9897-7308 pound. In order to provide oral testimony, however, speakers must be present. Displayed on the podium or on the screens will be a timer to help you stay within the allotted timeframe. You are invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and to say what part of San Rafael you reside in or if you reside outside of the city of San Rafael.
Okay. Next on the agenda is oral communication for the public. Remarks on non-agenda items are welcome at this time and may be on anything within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Remarks on agenda items will be heard at the time the item is discussed. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing nobody, we will move to the consent calendar, and there are no items under the consent calendar this evening. We do have one action item this evening. The San Rafael Planning Commission will meet to consider an ordinance amending titles two, fourteen, and fifteen of the San Rafael Municipal Code to eliminate the Design Review Board and transfer existing duties of the Design Review Board to other decision makers. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council regarding the ordinance. Before the item gets underway, I want to provide a quick overview of how the item will be presented this evening. First, we'll begin with a staff report. Second, commissioners will then have the opportunity to ask questions of staff. I ask the commissioners to make an effort to ask the entirety of their questions during this time prior to the close of public hearing. Three, members of the public will then be invited to speak. You have three minutes for public comment. And after the public comment, I will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for any discussion prior to requesting a motion and vote. We hear the staff report at this time.
Waiting for the presentation. It's so.
We're doing.
Oh. I got it.
I got this.
We got the city council set up where the presentation's off air.
I'm sorry, just one moment while we figure out the next level of technology here. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch. I am your planning manager. This is an overview of the entire packet. Obviously, that was text dense, so I did not cut and paste the ordinances for you. They are available in your packet, and I do have the PDF on a different computer if we need to go dig into that. But I did want to kind of frame the conversation this evening through a PowerPoint presentation. As you are aware, tonight's meeting is to consider an ordinance amending titles two, fourteen, and fifteen of the municipal code to eliminate the Designer View Board and transfer its existing duties to other decision makers. The whole point of this evening is just to present the report included in the packet and answer any questions you may have or voice to you through community members tonight. As you know, back on December 18, 2023, the council received a report on this topic and provided feedback regarding the consolidation of the Designer View Board and Planning Commission. The recommended consolidation is in response to state housing laws such as SB 35, which require local jurisdictions to establish objective design standards for a ministerial review process to provide more certainty for applicants in the Designer View approval process. Also, other state laws, including the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, otherwise known as SB 330, as amended by SB eight, which limits the number of meetings that the city can hold to five, including the appeal for particular types of projects. And another current law that regulates housing in our city, which is SB nine. There's a number of housing laws that, as you are aware, that have been brought by the state government to expedite, facilitate housing due to the housing crisis as they have defined it. It's really taken a lot of what used to be local discussion out of the picture. The three words that it really brings in is objective design standards. So we used to be able to say things like compatibility. We used to say things like context. Those, that language is gone forever when housing is involved. City council members provided feedback to staff to return to a future city council meeting after the following three things were done. Adoption of a revised objective design standards, which were adopted back in March of this year. The hiring of a permanent community and economic development director, sitting right over there, Mr. Hinkel, who was already on staff. We just managed to, we were very fortunate to bring him over as Director of Community and Economic Development, but he already has a longstanding, you know, in touch with the community. So I think it was an excellent, an excellent move. And then to allow more time from December to provide feedback from the community. At that meeting, the city clerk did invite anyone with additional thoughts to email her, contact her. I have reached out to her, and she had not received anything else in writing. I do want to note, though, that on the dais in front of you are comments from Responsible Growth Marine. They are also here this evening, and there is a concern that maybe enough feedback wasn't taken in. I would, I also want to explain that when you're amending an ordinance, it's citywide, and when a citywide document is being considered, as opposed to one lot or two or three lots or a district, the state of California and the San Rafael Municipal Code requests that we put a display ad in the paper. We met that credential or that, that objective. And admittedly, not many people read the legal ads. So I do feel that it's, we met the legal minimum. We didn't reach out to any particular parties. We didn't have an interested party list for this, but I do understand why there was a concern on, how did this get to the Planning Commission? Where was the notice? So that's, that's how that came to be. In preparation for returning this item to the City Council for consideration and possible action, there are two separate components that must be addressed. One is amend the composition of the Planning Commission to include design professionals. Based on the City Council input from December 18th, the clerk has drafted amendments to Title Two, that's the title of the municipal code where those would fall, to propose the incorporation of design professionals into the Planning Commission. And secondly, amend the other municipal code references to the Designer View Board. Other municipal code titles require the deletion of references of the board and either eliminating or transferring its role to the Planning Commission or the Community and Economic Development Director as appropriate. That was the body of the packet that was provided to you. There was Title Two. There was Title Fourteen, which had extensive modifications. I think it was thirty-seven. And Title Fifteen, which is a subdivision ordinance, but just had a few references to the board. So that's, that was the implementation of number two. Just to go a little bit deeper into that, when we say amend the composition, it's proposed that the commission would be restructured with five of the commissioners having expertise in planning, zoning, and land use, and four having an expertise in design. The proposed membership composition of this newly structured commission would be, or is, four district representatives, three at-large members, including at least one licensed architect or a design professional, and two at-large alternate members, licensed architects, who would be eligible to vote when serving in the absence of any of the commission's regular voting members. As you all know, alternates come to the meetings, they listen in, they are allowed to participate. They just don't vote unless we have an absence at the time of that action. And as I said, it's the titles two, fourteen, and fifteen. While the commission is formally charged with reviewing proposed modifications to our zoning code or Title Fourteen, staff thought it was a more complete answer to bring the other titles to this body as well, so that you could see the different parts and pieces that are moving as part of this task. All of those changes were in Exhibits A, B, and C. The recommendation before the commission tonight is to convene a public hearing and take testimony from all interested parties, discuss and consider the staff report testimony, and ask questions of the staff as needed. And the recommendation is to approve the resolution, the draft resolution, to recommend that the City Council modify Title Two to add the design professionals to the commission and amend the municipal code references to, of the Designer View Board as described in the staff report and draft resolution. This concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Margaret. Are there any questions from commissioners? I asked the commissioners to make an effort to ask the entirety of the questions at this time prior to the closing of the chair. If there are comments and any dispatches, we'll actually go down the line in the order that we are receiving tonight. Jill, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have one question. So I'm all for making the process better for everybody involved. But do you see, foresee, so everything will come to the Planning Commission? Do you see separate meetings still for a design review? And then another meeting to consider the other planning issues? Or how do you see this working?
I think that's a discussion that we've been having in our department since December. And I think that part of how it will go will be something we can discuss tonight. I would take any recommendations from the commissioners regarding how they feel would work best. And we would go back and, as you all know, the rules and procedures that you adopt every year would be amended after we come to a conclusion on how the commission would like to operate those meetings. Here is my thought. Members of the community have other jobs or other priorities, and it's always been a frustration of mine that we have a Designer View Board and a Planning Commission because they have to then educate themselves as to which meeting to go to to talk about which of the topics. So if someone really wanted to talk about a policy aspect of a use permit, if they showed up at the Designer View Board meeting, they would be like, I just wasted my evening, right? I just feel like it's, I'm happy that we are looking at a way to have the project discussed or the policy discussed in whole at one body. And SB 330 will be in play on almost every project that you see that has housing in it, whether it's mixed use or straight residential. So we will always be capped at, again, five meetings, but one of those has to be set aside for the appeal. So four. So in our discussions, where I think we've arrived in terms of the starting point, and I think this is something that will evolve as we continue to roll it out, is the first meeting, we'll have a staff report that will talk about the findings and the zoning information, the general plan policies, and all the things that you're used to seeing. But we will have a section on the design of the project and a section on any relevant policies of the project. For example, if there's a, if our use is conditionally permitted and it's in a new building, you'll have a Designer View component of your staff report and a use permit discussion of the staff report. On some projects, one meeting might be sufficient. You might have everything you need to know and take the testimony, and you sit down to do your deliberations, and you think, okay, I think, I think I know how I would like to vote. Other projects might be very complicated. Conceptually, there may be some complicated projects coming your way in the near future. That wouldn't be a one meeting, right? That would be, we could establish the topics, and we could start to do a study session. Depending on the complexity of the project, you may have a draft resolution, but you might not, you know, because we don't, we won't know exactly which way the commission might want to go. But in more complex projects, it would be more of a study session type meeting or hearing the first night. So you can take testimony, you can talk, you can direct staff to come back with some better, you know, I need some more of these answers. I don't think this was addressed. That was a great point made tonight. Let's look into that. All those things can happen, and then we would go to the next meeting. So I would say half of your projects that will come before the commission might be one meeting projects, and you will tell us if that's the case, right? Anything with a level of complexity that starts to cause concern or frustration, that would be at least a two-meeting project. Again, all of our concerns being we only get four typically, like ninety-nine percent of the time. That is one of the reasons why consolidating, and it's, I kind of, just to answer a little bit more than what you asked, we didn't really lose the Designer View Board. We, the board itself would fail to exist, but the expertise would not, right? So by combining the expertise of both bodies, you're saving that meeting count. And I think that's a valuable thing that gives San Rafael a chance to be flexible in our hearings, although more than any other city that's trying to get through a series of different advisory meetings on their way. But it's, the shortest answer, I guess, in conclusion is that's what we were thinking. We definitely want to hear from the commission members tonight on other thoughts that they have. I want to hear from the community about thoughts they have on this topic. But it might be a one-meeting project if it's simple. It will not be a one-meeting project if it is not.
So a point of clarification, is a study session, would that be considered one of the meetings?
Yes, yes, it's.
Thank you.
If I could just add on this, and you know, not all communities actually have a Designer View Board, and we've been very lucky to have one for so much time, that, that level of expertise on there. But typically, it is the Planning Commission that makes the determinations on projects. So us moving in this direction is not unusual, particularly with the new state laws being adopted. A lot of communities are starting to evaluate this in this way. I do think it's an opportunity, though, if we have study sessions for largely larger, complex projects, and also just explain the project. Sometimes it takes that much time to just understand or get a feel for it, but then recognizing that a decision will not be made on this evening, and we know that ahead of time. So allow the full vetting of the project, understanding of it, and questions being asked. Then recognizing at the next meeting, then there'll be more of a preparation, knowing that can you make the findings and all the other detailed analysis is there? So that's what we really envision. That's what I've done in other communities, and I know Margaret's worked there too. And there is a little more staff effort on this because we're going to have to really kind of focus on like, all right, which one gets one, which one gets two? But for me, it's based on the complexity and understanding, also the community feedback. A lot of times the notices go out, and we do get a lot of calls and questions on these things, and recognizing we probably need to understand this a little better and also working with our applicants that come through. But it is something that, that can be done, it has been done successfully. And then as Margaret is mentioning it, we are not losing that expertise, that's just being part of it. But the actual functioning and running of the meetings, that's where I think we're going to have a lot of questions that we work together on if this actually proceeds, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the report, Margaret. I have a couple of questions. One is just clarification of the staff report. So I see that there's two design, basically, we have four design professionals slash licensed architects that, that would be on the Planning Commission. It looks like there's only two that are really voting members. Is there? Is that correct? And then additionally, is, has there been a discussion around a quorum for those design members so that we ensure that there's more than one at least, or at least two, design professionals slash architects present in order to have a meeting? I can go to my next questions after that, because I know that's a complicated one.
So as, as shown in that, the slide and in the staff report, I believe you have the configuration correct, and that's the proposed configuration that came out of some of the discussions at the December meeting at the City Council. The quorum, the final, the final say on that will be with the city clerk at the city council. But we, the quorum, generally speaking, is the majority of the members of the commission. So if we have now added two members, we'll have a seven-member commission. How do I do it? So, and, and we have a member, I think, that is absent right now. So it has to be the majority, we'd have to have a majority of commissioners present to hold a quorum. The, the part of the, what I think is clearly kind of a brilliant discussion point that was brought forward by the council was, okay, the alternates are design professionals. So they're there, they can ask all the questions, they fully participate. They just don't vote unless a member of the seed Planning Commission isn't in attendance at that meeting. So they are fully participatory in the discussion. I suspect the Planning Commission will be listening closely to comments made by the alternates. And then you can choose for yourself if those are things you'd like to include in your comments or not. But they participate in every way except in the vote. And so it, it kind of supersizes the commission, but the quorum would still only be the simple majority of the members sworn in.
So for instance, if there were two planning commissioners that were not present, they, that were at-large or district representatives, or basically district representatives, because at-large or half, there's composition there. They would then be voting. I guess if anybody was absent, they would then move to voting.
That's my understanding, yes.
Correct. It's not just a quorum at being like absent, I guess. Like, say there was five of us here and there was, you know, two additional alternates, and it, it only required us to have three votes, you know, like to have, is there like, basically, do they, are they guaranteed a vote if they're present and there are members that are absent?
So my understanding is the alternates participate like you would.
Yeah.
If one of you were absent, that alternate would now actually get a vote, because they've been part of the discussions in there. So in essence, I wouldn't anticipate we'll have quorum issues because we have two alternates to fill in for vacations or times off or non-availability. And that's really the framework of adding to the bench of the planning commission. Now, this is interesting, too, because to be a planning commissioner currently, there are no requirements, it just, you apply for a board, commission is a volunteer position, as we all know. We're actually, actually defining that now, two members along with, or two alternate members will be licensed architects, and then three at-large members, including at least one licensed architect and one design professional. There are now minimum standards for the planning commission. So, but in essence, council, when they select the planning commission, those are the new requirements for selection, if this moves forward, so.
That's helpful. Thank you. Thank you both. The other question I have is just regarding the logistics of the meeting itself. And I know, you know, the question posed earlier started to address the bigger picture, but like how, how that, how many meetings are, but like within the meetings, is there, can you provide a little more information on how you guys see those meetings moving forward? I know you said there's like a design portion and then there would be a policy portion. But then there are also projects, when I was on the designer view board, that were really just pure design, you know, and we, like biomarin freeway design or freeway signs, you know, there were, there were office buildings, industrial, you know, like all sorts of stuff. So with those projects, then, if those projects would go to the planning commission then?
That's correct. In that case, it would sound a lot like what you used to hear at the designer view board, where if it's pure design, then it's an environmental design review entitlement in front of the planning commission. So it would look a lot like how that looked in front of the board, except that the board was never able to act, right? The commission acts as quasi-judicial, where mostly the board was an advisory body.
Yeah, I, yeah, thank you. And then during the meeting, can you, I guess, can you provide a little more structure? Like if it was something that required both, both parts of, both input?
I think the first, I'll start off and then I'll, I'm happy to yield. The first thing I want to assure you is that we're going to be being very careful about agenda management. We will try not to have, typically, staff tries to bring projects to the commission when they are ripe. When we have finished our analysis and the secret document's complete, we will try hard not to bring you several projects in any particular evening. I think that, there's a saying that no good democracy happens after midnight. I kind of think maybe it falls off around 10:30. So we will try as much as we can, based on the laws of the state of California, to bring you one project at a hearing. If we're bringing you more than one project and we'll be talking to the chair, if there's any reason that we have to bring more than one, we will explain ourselves, because it's something that we've run up with a deadline somewhere and we've run up on it, one item. Two items, I think we're at an interesting new point with your, with having new staff serving you. We get to revisit how the staff reports are formulated. We get to revisit how we put together PowerPoints. So we will open, we'll take a fresh view on how those are structured. For the entitlement, so it, I don't, at the risk of sounding geeky, but here's the thing. Everything's findings, right? There's findings for approval, there's findings for denial, there's, staff makes a draft recommendation on the secret document. So we will structure reports so that you can see the project description and the findings that need to be made pursuant to the municipal code in the state of California, depending on what we're looking at, and the conditions of approval, or if it's denied, there is no conditions, right? So for a simple project, the staff report might resemble what you typically have seen. For a more complex project, we probably will have an overview of the design, the legal context in which the design can be discussed, because I think that's really important for, I know the commission knows, but I don't believe the community knows, and I think this is an ongoing source of frustration, right? So here's the actual legal frame in which we can operate on this topic. And then here's the project, here's how it meets or does not meet the objective design standards available to apply to it, and here are the draft findings. That's, I've been playing this in my head, I have not landed, but I think, I think going thematic and going by topic with a project description overall, because that's, when I was, when I was a planning commissioner, many years ago, in a different city, I was like, what, tell me what we're doing. It's a use permit for da-da-da-da-da and a new building at this big at this site, okay. And then breaking it out by theme, so I keep saying design and use, but it's by any, each entitlement will have its findings. It'll be clearly addressed as, now we're talking about this entitlement, whether it's a variance or a design, environmental design review or whichever. And I'm always open, we are always open to hear, you know, that was great, or wow, you really missed it, but could you add this into the staff reports? Because that would have saved me a lot of time in fishing through the attachments. Or however we can make your time efficient before and during the hearing, I'm wide open to take suggestions.
I was just going to add that, you know, the, the planning commission always had design in their purview. You know, you gotta remember, the design report was a recommending body. You could either agree or disagree with their recommendations or based on the applicant's piece or like, you know, explanation, like, well, we didn't do that because of this reason. So it's always a purview that you've always had. In essence, now that we're bringing in design professionals as part of the actual planning commission, and they actually have a vote in the matter, saying, no, I really need you to do this element. I think it's really critical. But then hopefully it'll ultimately up to the seven voting members, if that's where they all land on. So, and I, and I do recognize, and I think us as staff, it is a change for us. So there will be some, some working through these projects as they come. And I do anticipate another level of projects, you know, coming in for this city and this community. And I think that's what's been desired. And I do think some of the state laws that have been passed and adopted are drivers for those factors, so.
Because really, like, if there are state laws, it's not even coming to us. So, you know, in, in, in fact, like, anything that comes in front of the board is, or the planning commission, is not within the purview of, of the state laws, correct?
Well, I mean, some of those, that's true, there's, there's so many.
Well, I think it depends on how many concessions and stuff like that.
Like SB 35 was ministerial, we wouldn't, we cannot, it's not a hearing. If they, it's, it's, if you, if you meet the criterion, if you're this tall to ride the ride, it's because right to building permit, that's what we have. It's what, we would, for legal reasons and for ethical reasons, we'd only bring you projects that are discretionary in nature. If there's something that's not discretionary in that project, like there's something that's complicated, but it has an accessory dwelling in it, in it, we will tell you, the DDU is actually not a discretionary part of this project, but it's part of the sum of the projects, we would show it to you. For example, an SB 330 project with a density bonus will come as a discretionary project and be before the commission at a certain size. So it's, it really depends on which state law. But right, if it's ministerial, we would never bring it before you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner Smootsie? No questions. Commissioner Mercado?
Thanks for, for presenting this, there's a lot of information, it's not easy. I, I'm not very familiar with jurisdictions not having like a designer view body. And so I had some of the same questions about quorum that it sounds like you're struggling with as well. The other thing that jumped out at me that I wonder if you thought about is what happens if there are no architects? So if we just don't have a pool and we have one architect per se on the, on the board or on the commission, would that impact the voting in the quorum? Or sort of would that put our one architect in the hot seat? That you're now going to be the one that we're going to be leaning on for guidance? And so that's sort of one question that jumped out at me, how that could handle. I would hope not, but.
I should be clearer, I believe that it's a simple quorum. So if the seven is your new commission, if, if you have four, you have quorum, the project goes on. I will also say, and you can imagine, as you play this out, if we had a project coming and we were on hearing number three and we didn't have a quorum, we would, we'd throw the meeting away. We can't meet, we'd have to adjourn, and we would have lost that shot. So it's, having an alternate is great, having alternates is great for that reason alone. The, I want to make sure I'm quoting this right. The three at-large members, including at least one licensed architect and one design professional. So I think these are, design professional, and we're actually talking about the definition of design professional. When I've spoken to the city clerk in the past, she believes there are a number of architects living in the city of San Rafael that are willing to serve in this fashion. If we, but by opening it to design professional, that's an urban planner, that's a, there's lots of urban designers, there's lots of people without certificates or licenses that could inform the planning commission's discussion. I also, I just want to say, to Micah's point, you've been doing designer view the whole time. You actually do have, by your experience and understanding of San Rafael and your service on the commission, you have some understanding of design, right? You have, you've, I, I would hazard a guess that being on this commission has changed how you look at buildings, how you look at plazas, how you look at urban spaces. With objective design standards in hand, it's wonderful to have design professionals and architects on the commission, but you have, you have the expertise to pull this together on these projects. The way that it's all been presented to us by the state, the building is this tall, the step back is this big. These are measurable, definable, contextual, there's, I mean, not contextual, there's no qualifiable standards left for any type of project with housing. You will see an occasional warehouse, you will see an occasional office building, but not since COVID, right? We're just not seeing that, everything we see has some form of housing in it. So, so you have, you have opinions, you have expertise. We will run the analysis, so you will be able to know if they're in compliance with the objective design standards that we can apply. If we have a, an issue where there's all the interest in the world, but when, when the city clerk goes out to recruit and the council goes, starts to interview, if they only find a few architects, they probably will need a Plan B, right? That will have to be something that, that would be a Title II change that would be great if you wanted to add your thoughts to that, if this is something you choose to recommend to the council. Hey, if you don't see a number of architects, you might want to up the number of design professionals. Or you may have, like, I really hope we can get a landscape architect as part of that design professional team, because the public spaces or the plazas or the green space are really important too. So seeing what you want as a design professional might also be helpful. If you have any thoughts or modifications about how you'd like to see this constituted, that would also be welcome. Last, I spoke to the clerk, she felt there was a number of folks that were willing to, to serve if appointed. So I'm, I'm hopeful, but it does, it does, it's rare, it's a very specific expertise when you bring it right down to a licensed architect.
Okay. The other question I had is, are there any projects right now that only go to the DRB that would not previously come to the planning commission? And I asked just because when I've sat with the DRB, it does seem to feel less quasi-judicial, you know, and much more collaborative, and that intimidation factor isn't quite as strong. It really feels collaborative. And so from a project proponent, I could see that being a little scarier now of, I'm up for the planning commission, but I'm actually not. There isn't a use permit or a permit or an entitlement, it's really a design review. And so I wasn't sure if that's still something that would happen and sort of what, how that would be dealt with.
There was, for example, there used to be conceptual design review, which goes away as a result of the consolidation. That was an early look by the board on a project where they would provide feedback. The city of San Rafael always tries to balance being collaborative with being regulatory when it comes to land use projects. And because of the laws that have been given to us by the state of California, the collaborative nature has been diminished.
Sure, that would be one of your five, so you'd lose that shot, gotcha.
And objective design standards, that's that. So that's, those things have taken the collaboration down to a very small. Now, we can say, if the development team's like, well, I have three options, but great, let's bring it to the commission with the staff recommendation, but, so the commission can choose among those options. But the days of kind of sitting around a table and being like, okay, what does this community want to see? Are gone.
Okay. The other question I had was, I'm, I'm not sure if under our code there's projects that previously would have gone the DRB that are now going to the PC that could go, instead of going up, would go down to the director? Sort of more of like an administrative review?
Yes, yes, that actually happened. In Title 14, we looked at each, each entitlement and made a decision. If it's, if it's complicated, if it's going to be a contentious discussion, if it's a major anything, a major environmental design review, or it's coming to the commission. If it was something that would not be contentious or has very simple, simple terms, minor design review, that type of thing, that has been redirected to the director, either as administrative or as its only administrator entitlement, depending on complexity. But yes, we, it was a, it was a call by the CED staff on, basically, if it's got anything that might have concern in the community, or to be very honest, if the design team's like, we don't want to follow your standards. We're like, great, let's talk about it, it's the planning commission, right? We would bring it to you. And the director always has the prerogative in the zoning code. If it, if we, if we notice it, we think it's, oh, this is pretty straightforward, but we're wrong, and we get a bunch of comments, we're like, this, we missed the mark, staff. We will then, the director has the authority to bring it to you. As if, you know, we could just bring it to the commission for discussion.
That's it for now, thank you.
I have a follow-up question.
Sure.
Just something that I thought of when, I want to say all, but I meant to say that all. Was speaking, if we say we don't have, you know, I know there are people that are interested right now in serving. There's, you know, we're looking at the immediate time, there's going to be a time, you know, we're going to have to fill these positions. Is there a way, or is there a plan if like we can't get those four? How do we, are we just going to fill the commission or all these positions with, you know, anyone who can serve or who would like to serve? How are we ensuring that the body is, has like an equal spread?
Currently, it's as described. It would be the, there's a, there's definitely a quota established. If the commission would like to recommend additional language on that, I heard Commissioner Mercado is like, well, you might, what if we run short of architects? We might want other design professionals as a second, you know, option B. It would have to be filled as listed in Title II. And so that's, that's a valid concern that I think everybody has thought about one way or another. I will say, the city of San Rafael, our community is really rich with architects. There's a lot of folks in our community that, but there may be a day when they don't wish to serve or they're so busy they have no time to, right? So right now, they would have to stay vacant until someone with that credential was identified and appointed.
If I could just add, a lot of times for billing, filling some more volunteer boards and commissions, like it relies on the community actually outreach, and people you know are like, hey, there's this interesting opportunity, you want to explore that? And that does happen, and it actually does fall on staff when we're looking for different members and even for our planning commissioners and designer board members currently. Like we come across a design professional, like, hey, do you ever think about serving? So, so there is that part of this community that was appreciated, and we've yet to. We've yet to not fill this particular planning commission or design report because of that. So. But it is recognized over time. It may shift and adjust, but then just like the ordinance separately, council and the city clerk's office, who is in charge of actually filling the, the, the seats. She could bring in amendments or changes, but to Margaret's point, if there's a recommended adjustment or tweak, if this happened, then. You know, so there's some flexibility in language, but currently this is how it's being presented as, as the, the language for Title Two.
I do have just a couple of questions. One is pretty far down in the weeds, but it goes to the alternates and their participation in the meeting. Is it sort of all but voting? So can they make motions? Can they second motions? Can they help to define the motion? Or where does the, the role of the alternate end in a particular meeting?
Well, my understanding is they can provide comment and feedback, but in terms of motion, you have to be a voting member. So. So that's, that would be that role. But so unless there was a. An absence of a voting member, then they can actually do that. But then they're, they're considered the alternate and. We actually have a, an existing commission. Actually it does have alternates on that in that way. So.
Okay.
Actually, that's a good question. Can they create conditions of approval? Recommend conditions of approval then?
I believe so. I mean, in terms of comments, I mean, you have an opportunity, you get a voice. That's why at least like, why do I attend all these meetings? What do I get out of it? At least you can actually give your opinion on that or voice opportunity for the voting members. Like, oh, that's a good one. Let's do that. So I, yes, they could make those recommendations on that. My question is traction of the voting members if they want to also accept that too.
But it, but it's up to the voting members to define the motion. To, to, to propose it and second it and devote on it.
Yeah.
With the input of the alternates. Second question is, just so that I, I sort of understand, I mean, my, my impression is, and I think you've more or less said it, that this, what we're proposing is. Kind of a compromise resulting from changed circumstance. We have regulations in coming out of Sacramento now that, that, you know, take away a lot of the power of the design review board. That reduce the number of meetings that we can have on any given project. And so this is, this is a way, so right, we're, we're not going to get five design specialists weighing in on, on the project. We will get somewhere between two and four, hopefully. But it's also a way of combining meetings because of the restriction down to five meetings. Is that, is that an accurate, accurate sort of review of why this, why this is happening?
I agree with you. It's a compromise in, in terms of trying to find the right model, the right fit. I mean, we, we have recognized that the design review board has brought value to this community. Enough where, you know, we, we've been kicking around this, this idea of consolidation or combination or reconfiguring the, the DRB. Approach since twenty, you know, 2020. So it's been four years. We've been actually kind of grappling with this issue. Enough where council kind of had to come to a head and this happened in December to say. We believe we want to go this direction and staff, please move forward and present this back to us. So. So that's why we're here to, you tonight with that proposal.
And so it is a way of making sure that we get input from design view as well as planning commission. If we have a limited five meetings and we didn't go to design review, then maybe that's one fewer planning commission meeting that we might have. So now we get the best of, of both worlds, but a little bit of a design review reduced in scope perhaps.
And is a study session then not considered one of the five, correct? If there is a study session?
It's considered one of the five.
It is. Okay.
My, my third question goes to the composition of any individual meeting, right? I, I. I'm hoping that if there is a project where that maybe is more design. Heavy than it is or planning commission heavy, and we were going to have a quorum, but it would be, say, just us four. And none of the design review folks could make it, that we would postpone that meeting to a time where we could have a group. Of us that, that involves the design folks.
I believe that would be, you know, run staff to actually identify forum advance and projects on, on the pipeline that are coming forward. To make sure we have, you know, the requisite amount of design professionals to provide that level of feedback to the commission. So.
And the last goes to the, to the notion that what we're putting on the planning commission, we already have on the design review board. The expertise. My impression was we have a couple of architects on the design review board. And my impression is that we haven't had a whole lot of trouble. Staffing the design review board. Is, is, is that right? It goes to a little bit, the concern of our ability to get the specified people onto the planning commission.
We've always had the ability to staff a designer report. So in this configuration, yes.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. Anybody else? Last questions? All right. Then the public meeting is now open. Margaret, would you please instruct the public on how they might provide testimony?
Certainly. Please just come up to the podium one at a time. Each speaker will have three minutes, I believe that was it, to provide public comment.
Good evening. My name is David Smith. I'm with Responsible Growth in Marin. This is turned on. But it is now. Thank you. Can you hear me? David Smith, I've lived in San Rafael for 25 or 27 years or something like that, and I'm a member of Responsible Growth in Marin. I am one of the people that only found out about the topic of tonight's meeting a couple of days ago. So I didn't look in the legal section of the paper. And so having said that, I haven't had time to read all 261 pages of the staff report either. So I may well have missed something. But I'm a bit of a detail guy. And I think the draft ordinance just needs much greater clarity and precision. For example, the term design professional doesn't appear to be defined. California code, California Civil Code, Section 8014 defines it very precisely. And I can read it if you like, or, but basically it's a licensed architect. According to one section of the Business and Professions Code or landscape architect to another, or a professional engineer. And so you get my point. So I think it needs to be defined much more precisely to try to avoid ambiguities in the future. Also, what does expertise in whatever, but I'm choosing planning as used in the staff report mean? Would a financial planner qualify or a business planner? The term planner should, I think specifically be an urban planner. And the, the, the code or the. The statute should, should state that. And I think that it should be a requirement that all members of the report that are required to have expertise. Should actually hold professional qualifications in, in that discipline. Because expertise could just be, well, I've done a fair bit of it over the years. And expertise again really is an undefined term. And as an aside, the draft ordinance creating the, the planning commission, Section 2.16.040. Has much less specificity as to member requirements than the staff report lays out. For example, the ordinance does not require the four district members to have expertise in anything, let alone hold qualifications. It simply requires them to live in the district that they represent. The staff report indicates that they should have expertise in one of several areas of focus, though we've already talked about expertise. And I think such potential for ambiguity would be completely negated if the criteria for the members of the current DRB was actually fully incorporated. Into the requirements for the new planning commission. And Exhibit A shows all the requirements for the current DRB, as have been crossed out because they're being done away with. But I think that document really does specify much more precisely what qualifications members should have. And additionally, the paragraph under the bullet points on page two of the staff report is also a bit ambiguous and I think should be clarified. And then just my final point, which actually has been discussed somewhat tonight, is why can't the two alternate licensed architects vote? What's the purpose of the restriction and why not just have a nine member commission? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
Kate Powers, resident of North San Rafael. I also feel like there wasn't enough notice for the public to have a real. Participation in this hearing. I'm hoping you will vote against this proposal to eliminate the DRB and to transfer the function of the DRB to the five. Planning commissioners and to a licensed architect and a design professional. That's not balanced. It's five, two. My experience on city and county committees is that alternates rarely attend unless they are covering an absence and will be a voting member. At your February 27th commission meeting this year, when the commission was told that. Though the objective design standards were not fully done. They needed urgent approval and they were intended for a larger review process. That those objective design standards incorporated comments from the September 2022 DRB meeting. But that it was not intended as their final task. The DRB asked that those come back to them for consideration. And that they were not done with them. The staff stated at that time that the city can go back and make any number of revised modifications to the. Approval of the resolution at a later date. My, my request is that you don't approve elimination of the design review board. Until the objective design standards are fully vetted and fully reviewed by the full DRB. Those professionals with expertise in landscape architecture, architecture and urban design. We don't want a city that is, the urban design is developed by, is, is formed by developers' projects. We want the DRB to have as much participation as possible in. Looking at home improvements, home additions, commercial, commercial facilities and projects. And any possible projects that have discretionary design review options. So I just, my, I just feel like this is not fully baked yet, how this will operate. I really think that. The proposal before you should not, should not happen until the objective design standards go full, for a full review. And I hope you will vote against this proposal. Thank you.
If there are no other people who wish to speak, I will close the public hearing. And Margaret, before I turn it over to commissioners for comment and commission. And discussion, I'm wondering if, if staff could, could address, I think, two of the issues that were raised. One is what, what is the status of? The objective design standards?
So what was brought to the commission previously was an augmentation of. Objective design standards that are currently in the municipal code. We have some objective design standards. In the municipal code already. This was something that was done on to help us with some gaps that were there in our current code. Like. There are some districts where until recently residential uses would not have been allowed. There's new state laws that say. Now you can have residential there too. We didn't have open space requirements listed because we. The authors of your zoning code didn't dream there was going to be houses there. So we added open space requirements. So it was a. It was not a perfect tool, but it was a, a way to address some of the gaps that had been identified by prior staff. In our objective design standards found in the municipal code. Most of your new development is going to happen outside, give or take one big project. Most of the new projects are going to be in the downtown area. Where you already have a downtown precise plan, which is a form based code. So. We will always want to refine the objective design standards. We will always. Be looking at them as we, every time one of the planning staff is explaining the objective design standards to a development team or to an interested community member. We make a note when we're like, oh, that could have been clearer or that's missing a whole word. It happens, but we will. We will be back before you. As soon as we can with some zone, some code cleanup in particular. And as we roll out. Those corrections, we will bring clarifications or additional objective design standards that we have found are necessary. So I guess that's what I want to say is we are, we are stronger because of that document that was adopted by city council. There is always going to be room for improvement.
Yeah, sorry to add to that. During the council hearing for that, that item being approved, it was requested that staff return back to the planning commission with a comprehensive evaluation. Of the objective design standards, but also tying in together, like our, our design requirements are spread through multiple documents, right? Hillside design guidelines. The zoning ordinance. Objective design standards, but to bring in a comprehensive, you know, update to that, that really targets the objective design standards. So it's very clear for. The planning commission, the council, developers, homeowner, like this is what we're looking at when you evaluate a project. So. That is a much deeper project. And therefore I said, I'm happy to do that. We will put that on the work program and return as soon as we can. And then that's really where we're, we're at. And I, and I do anticipate that as one of our tools. It's like a tool in the toolbox of how you evaluate projects. Adding to the objective design standards are really a critical piece. So we recognize that. And then. Also, as, as we evaluate projects, we might find things or issues like, okay, but he didn't address that. We should. So then we can put that on a list of areas to go deeper on in terms of establishing what that objective design standard would be in this type of circumstance. So. And as I said, this is an evolution for this community amongst others in California of how we address. The housing shortage crisis. So.
Good. Thank you. And, and would staff like to speak at all to the definitions that are in, in the reports and the documents?
Yes, that is, that is a, a great comment and I do appreciate that because. While we're drafting these pieces and, and this issue actually came up between staff and then also our legal teams to say, well, we needed to find this better. So I will read into what the current thoughts are on this and, and I'll open this up for your purview, but. Design professional means an architect, engineer, landscape architect, building designer, urban designer, urban planner, or other similar design specialist. They may, but are not required to be licensed or registered in, in the related field. And that's the license part of it. It was really related to about broadening the pool, right? Everybody's licensed required. I couldn't get retired architects. So, you know, so that's where we're looking at right now is, is actually adding that as part of the proposal moving forward for council. Cause that is the Title Two chapter, the design professional definition. So that provides that clarity about what a design professional would be.
Great. Thanks very much. Were there other questions that might be addressed that I missed?
I just, there was one comment about there are no standards for who can be a planning commissioner. And I just want to point out that's by design. You are representing the community in which you live. You are not supposed to have an area of expertise. Sometimes we have folks with expertise and that's always wonderful. But the point of the planning commission is to bring the broad understanding of the community in the appointed body. So. I just want to say that's, that's exactly the point.
Thanks very much. I would like to turn it over to Commissioner Discussion and Deliberation. We'll go down the line again in order that we're seated tonight. Commissioner Rodby?
Well. If we can address the issues that they brought up about the design and that into the thing, but I also think that. My fellow commissioners brought up a good point that if you couldn't find the licensed architect. We should have a plan B on there so that we don't have to go back and redo. Redo the whole thing. Other than that, no.
Commissioner Sadi?
Thank you. So I have a few comments. I think. Big picture, I think it's a, it's a good move. I, I don't think there's, you know, generally speaking, there's a problem, like. It would be good to have that discussion be integrated so that. You know, hopefully the projects can get better because we're having better dialogue about them. But I do think that there are a lot of things that are not tied up in making this ready to, you know, send to the. City council. You know. We need to figure out what that quorum is. I think that's important. And I, I guess we have the definition now of a design professional. And then having, having more clarity around structurally how a project will move through meetings and then also the structure. Or general structure of an individual meeting. Those are things that, you know, without having those, it's really hard to know what we're actually voting on. And I think again. And I think, again, there, without having those guaranteed votes from design professionals or architects, we, I, I guess, you know, there was a good question brought up, like, why are there alternates? You know, there'll be a time where housing doesn't make up the majority of applications, and we're discussing this change as if housing is, is what we're talking about. But by nature of the laws, what's going to come before the commission is not, it, it will be housing, but it's not going to be housing-heavy. When I was on the DRB, we looked at projects such as lab and office buildings, transportation, industrial, freeway signs, shopping centers, car dealerships, hotel, even gas station canopies. Those discussions, I think, you know, we are qualified to have certain discussions, but the lens in which those, the DRB reviews those projects and the design professionals review those projects is very different than how we look at projects or, because we don't, you know, not all of us are required to be those professionals. So I think because of that, like, the structure of the overall meetings really needs to be addressed because the, I mean, we're, we, we made really great impacts, you know, with having a DRB. We avoided having huge light-up signs at Northgate 1. We made sure that some of the buildings that were built downtown had, you know, their, that their non-dominant facades didn't look like blank faces. I mean, there are things that added up, that are adding up to maintain the character of San Rafael. So I do think overall, like, yeah, let's combine it, let's make it work, let's make it better to encourage development, let's get it better to make the process more streamlined, and to have more, I think to have more dialogue and better collaboration, I think those things are all great. But I do think that we, we need to have a little more clarity. And then there comes the exact, objective design standards. When we had that meeting, our hands were kind of forced because we were, we needed to get that grant. And we, we were, we suggested having dates on when we could have those standards met, and we, we, we ended up not creating those dates. And there are parts of the design, a lot of the language in the downtown precise plan says, suggests, shall, there's not requirements. There's, we discussed in that meeting that a lot of those items in the downtown precise plan need to be, have that language be objective and need to be incorporated in our objective design standards. And I do think, you know, without a lot of that, we're, we are structurally impacting how a project is, you know, like, reviewed. If, if, if we don't have objective standards, we don't have a body that is going to review them closely before it gets complete. And then we have some clear, like, items that need to be clarified and defined. I'm not sure if this is ready for, you know, it's ready to be passed on, but I do appreciate all the work. I mean, that's a lot of pages, and I know it's not just community development, but it's other departments. And the council members have been really active, and, you know, the city clerk has been really active, so I appreciate all the work. I just think that we, we definitely need some things to be addressed.
Commissioner Smoothie?
All right, pardon my comments, just got a couple of questions for you guys. Maybe you don't know this off the top of your heads. In the last two years, how many planning commission meetings have there been? Or maybe even what percent of the planned meetings did we actually have?
Yeah, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay. Do you have a sense, same for DRB? Probably not, right?
DRB's had a, a good amount of cancellations for their, their, their meetings, just given items to review. So even since my arrival as director, there has not been a designer review board meeting yet.
Yeah. When did you, when did you start?
Started in March, but, you know, I go all the way back to, you know, October, November, that's probably the last one, so.
Yeah. So the reason why I ask those questions is, maybe I'll take a sort of a different point of view, because I think that a lot of the point of view here has been maybe more technical, technocratic, and usually I'm on that side of things. But I also think about, I'm also looking at, like, downtown San Rafael, just like, from an economic perspective. I look at just the economy of San Rafael and Marin from a, from a broad perspective, like, you know, we're contracting economy, we have declining sales tax revenue, like, you know, we've had so many meetings canceled in the, in the, in the planning commission, like, I, I understand, I think conceptually, the, the objections that people have around this is not fully baked, yada, yada, yada. I mean, we have nothing going on, though. Like, we don't have any, we don't have any projects. Like, we, if, if there's, if there's nothing happening right now, then we might as well, like, adjust our processes to reflect that. Instead of having, instead of subjecting projects to all these, like, designer review board meetings and this, and it's like the one frickin' project, like, we should consolidate that and bring people on and, and put it all together, right? Just, it's just a waste of everybody's time if we have these separate meetings and there's no demand to develop here. Like, it's just, I don't know, it's just, it smacks of, like, pretension to, like, force everybody to go through that process when, like, in reality, we have to beg people if we want any, like, responsible growth, we have no growth. Like, if we want actual growth, we actually have to encourage and create an environment that happens. So I think consolidating our process and keeping in mind that, like, a lot of this, a lot of this is not voluntary, a lot of this is being forced upon us by the state because we historically have provided so many obstacles to development that we've created a massive political crisis. So, right, we've had now voting patterns, and I say this, like, multiple times, right? We have these massive statewide voting patterns that vote in people that take this power away. If we, as a community, historically had been more open and responsive to, like, the changing needs, this kind of stuff wouldn't be imposed from top down, and we wouldn't be losing this citizen power. So a lot of the citizen power is like a direct result of, like, historical patterns of opposition to growth and whatever in, in the region. So I just, like, I, I want to make people cognizant of that. Like, what we're seeing right here is a response by the city, it was, it's a response by local entities of, like, recognizing that we've chased away local development, like, there is no growth, like, there's, there's nothing happening. Like, we, we have to make changes, we have to respond to, like, the change of the time. I get it, it's uncomfortable, it's not what we want to see necessarily, but like, that's just how, that's just how shit goes, right? I'm also not a fan of, like, opposition without, like, a proposal. So I would also say, maybe suggest to us as a commission, like, if we have some thoughts about quorum and things like that, I would make, I would suggest that we make recommendations to staff, to say, like, here's what our thoughts are about that, so that we don't just say, like, okay, this is not good enough, come back, some, you know, come back later with something better. But we'd actually say, like, here's the direction that makes sense from a quorum perspective. Like, I think from, from my, from my standpoint, you know, I, I don't know if, I don't know if it really matters who is, is voting, you know, because I think that if, 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 because I think some of the objections that I'm seeing from this were like, there's not enough community representation, the community voice needs to be, you know, supported, we need to be protecting what those are. It just seems sort of like counter to that, to then also demand that, like, everybody on the planning commission have, like, licensure and all this stuff, and is this, because then it's like, it's gonna, because like, fundamentally, there's like a massive portion of our community that if we're going to be the elephant in the room, is going to be excluded by all of that. And they're already, like, there's really scant participation from that element of the community. So, you know, again, the more that we create erect barriers for community participation in this, like, I don't know, it just, it, it seems very counter to the values that were pushed in terms of community participation to then also then start to gatekeep all the positions on the planning commission to be like, to be X, Y, Z, right? So I think, I think, I think those are, those are sort of my, my general thoughts around sort of like, the response to that. I, I do recognize that there needs to be development in this plan, but like I said before, this is probably the best time to do that, to like, blow stuff up, because like, what else, like, we're not, it's not like we're in the middle of, like, 30 different projects, and then we're like, why, why are we doing this and changing this process now? It's like, everything's dead. So like, let's, let's fix stuff so that when stuff starts to pick up, you know, I mean, like, right now, we're in a market environment where, like, a lot of this, a lot of these concerns are academic, like, we're not going to have developers coming and changing the city roughshod, because like, there's no financing for it, like, the, the property values are too high here, the, the owners downtown don't want to sell for reasonable prices, so it's like, nothing's, nothing's happening. Like, we're not gonna, we're not gonna open some floodgates and, like, tomorrow, we're gonna see, you know, IKEA or whatever, like, all over up and down San Rafael. I don't think any of these guys even want to come here in the first place. So, like, let's, let's, like, let's fix stuff now when we have a chance, and then when market conditions change and there may be, maybe more desire to come here, then we'll be better armed and we'll have some, like, iterations of planning, as opposed to waiting for the perfect plan, you know, and then, you know, it's crickets, and we've just wasted a bunch of time on, on nothing and political capital and ill will and all that kind of stuff. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yeah, I think it's interesting. I didn't think about how quiet it's been. I think those were good questions to ask, right? Like, we have not met in a while. But I also think we haven't met in a while, and it may be a good time to change this, but I think there's a lot of ambiguity with what was presented, and I'm honestly just kind of confused with what the planning commission will be. So if I were the decider of this project, and I was looking at what will be our quasi-judicial board, I really don't get it. I don't understand the role of the alternatives or the alternates. I don't really understand why architects are required, and if we have two alternates, who cares? You know, it's, for me, it's very hard to figure out the form and function, right? So if we got to blow things up to address SB 330 and SB 35 and the objective standards, that may be fine, but this is the area that we can preserve what our community wants, right? This is the area we can make sure the voices are input and all of that. And I think to help in doing that, this is a step in the right direction, but I'm not, I don't want to get into the weeds, but I think we have to. And one of the things that I realized as I was reading this was, I don't know if we thought about the planning commission bylaws and how those are structured now and how they'll be, need to be changed, because that may be some of the process and form that will help staff with narrowing it down, right? So that's one area to look in and saying, okay, maybe we should revise the bylaws as well and do all of that. Like, maybe we should have done that concurrently, and, you know, my bad, I should have proactively thought about this. So that would probably help because it'll formulate the identity of what the planning commission will be, and I think ultimately, that's, that's what I'm struggling with, which is what is the planning commission going to be? The DRB had its role. They come in, it's a bunch of people who know design and they review it, they give you what they think needs to be done according to the code and they move on. And now that's been partially removed by the state, understand, but in those gray areas, that's where their role was. And so if that's going to be in the planning commission, that's great. So if that's the definition of a design professional, whatever it may be, that's a struggle, that's a policy determination the council's going to have to make. Because if you narrow it down into a bunch of architects and design professionals, you no longer have a planning commission, you have a design review commission, and that could easily transfer into that because that's going to control the conversation. Equally as much, if you have a bunch of, uh, design professionals, but we have no subjectivity in these projects, and it's all policy call, and it's all interpretation of the code, and, you know, politics, then you have these two alternates just kind of sitting there, they're not going to make motions under the Brown Act, they're not going to vote, they could provide input, but if it's like not a architect or design issue, then they're just sitting there. And I just don't want to have that alienation feeling happen, right? Where all of a sudden we have vacancies, things like that. So for me, that's kind of what jumped out. I think it's struggling with identifying what the, the, the planning commission will be through this hybrid approach, understanding that it needs to be a little bit of both. And in order to clarify what both need to be, we need to define the positions in them and the roles and responsibilities of them, and I, I, I don't see that. I like that quote you gave, that maybe in the Civil Code or the Public Resources Code, wherever that came from, or maybe the old DRB language, I thought that was really helpful in terms of creating a little bit of a shell as to who these roles will be. I would really encourage keep the language sort of in a hierarchy, right? Like, we want to have design professionals, but if they're not available, then we want to have folks with design experience. And if they're not available, then we want to have bodies, you know, and really create the hierarchy, open it up, and if we're going to open this up, then really do that. But then that kind of takes that design professional, those two or three positions out, and I'm trying to balance that out, because I think that's what staff needs. They're going to need somebody that can sit up here and provide that input that I just don't have the, the technical expertise. So I'm trying to balance that out. I don't think I have language except the hierarchy, right? Which is, we'll have the four district reps, we'll have three at-large members, or maybe we have five at-large members. And the goal of those members will be architect, design professional, and if not available, then with certain expertise to fill that vacancy or something like that, to give you that flexibility to find folks, right? Because you could have two architects and that's good, and maybe you want somebody who has something that's totally different. I don't want to close that off. So for me, it, it's the bylaws and thinking about how those will change, because it's going to put us in a tough spot if, assuming this passes, that's going to come back, we're going to have this new layout, and we're going to have to on the fly think about what the bylaws will be to reflect that. And we're going to be the ones that say, well, what's quorum? Who can make the motion? Oh, did I just violate law? Because I said, yeah, I, I don't know. Right? So that meaning, so the more we can anticipate that, the better, to make it easier. And then sort of the, the bylaw updates, I thought that would be good. That flexibility in sort of who these folks will be to give you that option would be really good. And, you know, maybe ultimately, if we have these projects on the horizon, you know, sort of, there may be some that are coming in. I think it would have been good tonight to use that as an example. This is what we view this kind of project, how it would be structured. Because in my mind, I just kept thinking, well, wait, if a bigger complicated project, which is likely all that's going to come to us and not to the director, which makes sense, it's going to be complicated, it's going to have some heavy sequel issues on one end, and so maybe some complicated design on the other, so we're going to have two study sessions, it's going to be broken down, that's two out of the five already. Aren't I just in the same position I was if I just went to the DRB then I came to the planning commission? Because I'm just going to rely on the DRB slash my landscape or my architect colleagues the same capacity. So I think if that issue came up, we should have a good answer for that. I, I really don't. To me, it just sounds like we're the same thing, just with a different body. So I would encourage, like, that's something that, when pressed, can be a little squishy, and I think the public input doesn't feel like they're getting the benefit of that bargain, even though I think they are, because you have one meeting, right? You have one meeting, it's going to come up, the design professional will say something, we'll have input, cool, let's, but I also think we're going to have to amend on the fly, and staff will have to address things on the fly, because it's not going to be in the package that the DRB said, oh, I, we recommended this, it maybe doesn't meet an objective standard, but we changed this, that, and that. That will be coming through the dialogue of the meeting, that we'll have to be able to react and say, oh, okay, well, does that change the condition? Does that, so it's going to be, I see a lot more interactive, and I thought an example of a project would have been good for that. And so I think going to the council, that may be something that's helpful. And then, once it goes for that approval, sort of maybe using the bylaws as an example, that may help structure the conversation, because I think it would have helped at least me tonight, because I support it, it's got to happen, we're losing control, but I'm very confused about what's happening, and I think when we come back under the, here's the new body, I'm scared things will come out and we're going to have to go back and make some amendments.
I am going to echo the sentiments of other commissioners without waxing poetically about them. I, I, I agree that now is a really terrific time to blow things up, and it's great that we're doing this. But I, too, I, I don't think I could have articulated it before the meeting, but I, but I feel a little bit uncomfortable that we know exactly where we're going. And so it feels like we need a better sense of where we're going, maybe a better articulation of the, the minutia in, in the change and, and how that's going to manifest itself in any particular meeting. So beyond that, unless anybody else has anything to add.
I have a thought. Why don't we just go through here and, and sort of, I, I kind of like all those question, or Commissioner Mercado's question around, like, what do we see the planning commission's identity going forward? I mean, we kind of have a sense of, like, what's coming from the state. I mean, we collectively have a good sense of, like, what's happened in the community. I mean, maybe we'd be helpful, I don't know, if we were to each, like, share some of our thoughts, and, I don't know, maybe have some, I don't know what motion we're going to come with afterwards, I'm not clear on that yet, but that may be some useful data points for us to use for that.
I agree. And I also think that, like, you know, we do have the time right now, so let's, like, do as much as we can today. But I don't think, we, there's no reason to rush it because we don't have the project, so let's, let's make sure it's done right. Like, if, if we don't have anything else going on, we, we might as well, like, you know, bake the perfect cake instead of, like, building the perfect ADU or something, you know, like, I don't know, we have, we have time to do it. So let's make sure we're useful during the time that we're not reviewing these bigger projects, or any projects.
To the chair, if I just have some clarifying comments in terms of just kind of the, the request of staff and what we're looking at, and also the purview of really what's been asked of us by council. So when we, when we provided, this is the, the challenge of this, and we really struggled with this, even put this package together, I'm like, there's so many pieces, seems so simple, but it's not. It, it's, the council's purview in terms of creating the planning commission and is a, does, dissolving of, of the designer review board. That is a direction that they've asked us to do in the, in this type of format. We, we presented a report to them, said we like that. Give us the details of how that works. So we, like, okay, in order to do that, we need to take back the planning commission because they need to, by law, are required to look at Title 14 zoning, because that's in their purview. So it's recognizing the, the parts and pieces of this particular question. So really what's before you tonight is, for Title 14, So really what's before you tonight is, uh, for Title fourteen, um, the review authority, is it planning commissioner reviewing? If the DRB went away, if council decides to go that direction, if the DRB went away, is the planning commission the right body or is it, um, the committee, uh, and, and economic development director? So that's really what we've been present, presented here. In terms of like how the quorums work or the management of the meetings, uh, Commissioner Mercado's dead on, that really is the bylaws, right? And then actually he's going to be required for us to amend those bylaws to bring in like, what is the quorum? What is the minimum requirement of design pieces? How, how, how do you want to manage your planning commission meetings? Um, and give direction based on the new format, because this has been the new format. But it really is council's authority if they choose to go that route. This is what they want done and this is how they're going to do it. Even the selection of, of planning commission members, right? That's their purview. They, they select and they, they're trying to find a balanced group that is representative of this community. Um, so that, that's, I'm trying to also kind of keep that in, it's, it's always hard to try and it's like, well, what if they're not a design professional? Well, that's really the council's purview to bring in someone else, another body.
But is it part of the, what we have for recommended action is to modify Title two. And we are supposed to be recommending things to the council. So even though it is their purview, I think what we're all seeing is that because we're intimate with this process and this is the process, this is what we've been asked, we want to make sure our recommendations are, are thorough and complete and thought out. I, I, I think that, yeah, like, we should understand like what's in our purview and what's not. But like, if we say, yeah, we recommend it, but we don't know what the bylaws, we don't have any idea of what recommendations of the bylaws are changing, then we really don't know what we're actually rec, we can't really say, yeah, we recommend it to the city council because we don't know what we're recommending.
I- i- and that's, it puts us in a weird spot because it's a catch 22 because we need the planning commission to tell us what the bylaws were going to be and recommendation. Council will not tell you the bylaws. It's up to the planning commission to establish their own meeting regulations and how they approach it.
Just to dovetail on that, the next meeting, once we know what the composition of the commission is, and that's again, the, the, the ingredients that are listed, um, in the report are what the preferred alternative that the council identified at the December meeting. So once we bring that back, I will be right back to you with the bylaws. Uh, because I can't modify bylaws until the ordinance is going in a direction, right? I can't, so it's, the catch twenty-two is true. Like, we were, we were looking at the things, it's like, okay, these are the, the ordinances are the skeleton of what's happening, right? How it looks, how it feels is a bylaws conversation. And I realized when we were putting this together, if this goes forward, the next meeting has to have the bylaws because I really want the commission's input on how the meetings feel, how they're structured. And that's where it's complete within your purview to say how that works, once the skeleton of the commission is established. So, um, and, and again, to Micah's point, fourteen is your direct, um, purview, fifteen and two are, this is what's happening around Title fourteen, this is the overarching goals that the council has discussed. And fifteen is just, you should be aware that there were items that were have to be rewritten. But, um, you have a number of options before you tonight. Um, but you, you could always, um, ask us to come back with something different. Or you could pass all of your concerns about what you've been discussing this evening onto the council. Like, I hear that this is the preferred alternative of the composition of the commission. Here's all the things that we think the council should consider when they're making that decision. That's just two, two of the many options before your commission this evening.
So I'm, I'm not feeling like we're prepared to make recommendations to the council without a conversation about the bylaws. Is that the sense that other people are having as well?
I feel like we should just have a meeting that's a study session on this and we should all like be able to do some homework and come prepared. Because I think there are, like Commissioner Smooty said, there are some things that we can, we can work on and figure out like, um, like here in person because they're not super complicated. But like, there are other things that I think, um, require us to like do a little homework. I also think too, like, without the objective, the, the objective design standard is a whole separate thing, but I think that, you know, it, it does have an impact on how, you know, how the lens in which this is being decided on.
Any other thoughts on, on how to proceed?
No, I think that because we have questions, I think that's the answer, right? Um, I don't think we're prepared to make a decision. I mean, I'm still confused and I need to really think about.
And so should we be making a motion about what we want to do next? Or do we just ask you um, to bring us back together to have a deeper conversation about the implications for planning commission bylaws and other aspects that we need to think about and discuss before making recommendations to the council?
It would be my recommendation that you, um, provide areas of concern or additional information needed. Um, you know, as, uh, discussed, like, if you want to get into the bylaws, in essence, you're requesting us to return with the bylaws discussion of the bylaws were adopted, this is what, this is how this would be. But I really am trying to make this point of the fully seated planning commission would be the ones that actually would take on the bylaws discussion. So it, it, it is that question. We could office look at a draft in with the current configuration of the planning commission. But that's why if you want to go to the bylaws discussion, it's a little tougher because it may, council may direct a different um, formation of the planning commission. And that's what the messages we receive from the council. Um, but other than, um, operations, like, you know, the quorum question, um, I think we could, you know, provide a recommendation of what this would look like, but love to have your input or thoughts on this too. Um, also about, um, how many members or how the design elements would work, at least from your perspectives. Um, Margaret, is there anything else you can think of?
Well, I think I want to go by process of elimination. I didn't hear any concerns about Title fifteen and I heard almost no concerns about Title fourteen. So what I'm hearing is there's the, the confusion, um, or the hesitancy to, to make a recommendation, um, is regarding Title two, regarding how the, the, the composition of the planning commission and how, um, under the bylaws or operating procedures, how commission would, um, operate in a hearing or operate in a meeting.
Can I jump in real here? I, I actually did break this down and I think our conversation otherwise, but, um, and, oh, I guess in Title two, that's where it is, I just had, had on page fourteen. It's like the DRB responsibilities. Those responsibilities then have to be integrated into somehow put into the, um, ordinances. Like, we need to modify the responsibilities of this body to like reflect this change, correct?
So that's, that's literally what is before you. All the responsibilities of the board, as identified where the board appears in the municipal code, have been redirected. Um, and those are, that exhibits AV and C.
Yeah, but like, in general, when we look and see, let me just grab it here. Um, you know, section two sixteen one twenty-two, um, to serve as an advisory body on the design matters, including minor physical improvements, administrative design permits, referred the board to the community development director, okay? Provide professional design analysis, evaluation and judgment as to the completeness, competence and appropriateness of development proposals. Like, that kind of language, not necessarily like the bigger language. And is that integrated into, okay?
Well, in that case, the director would do it, right? Where, where the advisory body was to the director, then the director now has it. When it's at a staff level, and I realize this isn't in the staff report, but you should be aware, the council has directed staff to make sure we get a, um, a stable of consultants that we can ask. So, um, consulting architects, consulting landscape architects, et cetera.
Yeah, I think I read something that was.
So that's the, so when it's, I mean, when it's at staff level, if we feel like we don't have a core competency, we can go out and, and, and retain one, right? Um, but the role of an advisory board that opines before the project gets to the planning commission, that time has ended. So in anywhere we could bring their purview forward, we did. Um, the conceptual designer view days, which is really kind of what you were reading, is like early input on projects to make them better. We don't have that option anymore.
But we do on non-residential projects, correct? We, we do, yeah, like, I think that's the problem. Like, we're talking about all of this as though it's purely residential projects. And, you know, like, right now, we don't have projects. And right now, the residential stuff is top of mind, but we're making a decision that's going to live on in perpetuity. I mean, we're changing the composition of how we, the city has reviewed projects for, you know, I don't know how many years.
And I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm absolutely not, if I sound at all argumentative, I apologize, that's not.
No, no, and I'm sorry if I said argumentative because I did get passionate. No, I'm not being argumentative. I'm just saying like, yeah, like, those conceptual reviews are gone for residential projects and they're not necessarily like, a lot of the stuff that's gone in front of the design review board would never, like, it doesn't even hit the planning commission, right?
I, I will say though, there, there's, as part of this discussion, there's those opportunities, like for commercial or voluntary to bring items forward who are looking for that general feedback. Um, that's something I've done in other communities where we actually do take this into the planning commission, um, for community feedback in that way.
Yeah, but I just don't think, that's a barrier to development. I just don't see that as like a real.
It, it's, actually, it's an optional program. It's an optional program for developers should they like to do it, so.
Yeah, and I think they're just trying to get their projects through.
But sometimes they do need that kind of level or.
For sure.
They do, do take up on some of those opportunities.
Yeah, and I've, like, I think they, you know, like, um, public affairs people reach out to us, they get our input, like, we get that. But I think their formal process is, is there, is worked. And I, I agree, like, we need to make a change, we just need to make the right change. I don't think there's a rush right now, we're not, there's no rush unless you guys give clarity, there's no rush on getting this to the planning commission tonight, or, sorry, the city council tonight.
Yeah, I, I will put in that rush of clarity because I do believe we have multiple projects that are been, the reason why some of the applications have not come in fully is because they've been waiting since December on the direction for this to come forward. If they can avoid designer view board or process and time and effort, um, a lot of project applicants have. Uh, they've held the projects and I do get that inquiry, I've been asked that question. When is the, you know, city council moving forward with the consolidation of the designing board, the planning commission? And there are projects that, um, I've been in discussion with that they are watching this in terms of process end. So, so I do believe there is a, a desire to move projects forward um, in, in a timely manner. But I, I also want to be very clear, we want to answer the questions or concerns from, from this commission. It's, as I said, this is something we're going to have to build together, um, of, of how it flows, how it works. And then I do believe, um, to, to Commissioner Mercado's point, those bylaws are really critical, right? Um, but the key point of getting clarity from council about how they like to structure the planning commission is, is one of the key pieces in order to bring forward a full vetted review of how the bylaws work, so.
I think it's straightforward. It's pretty clear, it's dissolve and reassign. So they just delete, you just, they, they struck out, they deleted the RV and they put planning commission. What we are raising is, what does that mean? That, that, you're right, that's not our purview, we don't have to address that. We're going to be told by the council what that means. What we're raising to you is, that is a really complicated issue. And I, the fact that there's projects in the queue looking to exploit that, I don't feel like that's an impetus to me to be like, oh, let's jump into it. We can do it, but I will say buyer beware. Because from my experience, when you just rescind and replace outright, because that is the simplicity of it, these issues will come up. So the bylaws are the first one, the second will be the exceptions, the exceptions to the rule. That first commercial project we have where we speak, there's no clarity, it's going to get used against us. They're going to say, well, we don't have to volunteer to do it. I don't have to. That's going to get very awkward. And so I think we, as the planning commission, should raise that to the council and say, this is your directive, totally fine, you want to rescind and replace. That will improve the majority of these applications. There will be outliers that will be complicated and may exploit the simplicity of this new program or this new design. And it may be not what the community wants, what we want. But we may have to deal with that. Now, how do we address that now? I don't think we can because we don't know. So unless somebody up here has input on that, I really don't know. But I would just say, going back into what's being requested, I'm okay with that, it's a rescind and replace. I really can't oppose it. I think it's confusing and a bit ambiguous and a little bit murky. But I don't think staff, I don't think you could clarify it. You know, it's just, it is what it is. And so I'm not looking at you saying, hey, you need to clarify, it's just, this is what has to be done. It's not very clean, we're going to probably learn as we go through it. Is, what can we provide tonight? Well, outliers, that's a great one. Bylaw, the bylaws issue, really need to think about that. I would love the council, when it's presented to them, to have that on, you know, hey, that's an issue that comes up. Maybe the council, having been so many planning commissioners previously, maybe they have some input as well for us. Because I read our bylaws, it's going to be a kind of an overhaul, right? Because we're, this is an advisory body that had a completely different charge than what we do. That, with them being gone, what hasn't been discussed is that's who we leaned on for our quasi judicial determination. Now it's all within the body, right? So ultimately for the council, if it comes through an appeal or if it's a recommendation, what do they care? Like, it went through the channels, it's through the experts. It's us that need to understand, okay, have we looked at all these issues through this now compromised body? I just don't really have any input to say, hey, I don't think you did this the right way, let me tell you, it's like, rescind and replace, I totally get it, I think it's fine. I'm also fine pushing it back to have the conversation with the bylaws, but I just don't know how much we'll get out of that, right?
But I do think like, yeah, we have time sensitivity, we had time sensitivity at objective standards. We got, that meeting happened two weeks before the deadline. Now we're saying, oh, people have been waiting since December, but this is, this is June. So like, I, I understand the rush, but like, we need the time. If we don't understand it and there's a lot of murkiness, like, we can't be told, oh, we're holding up applications. Like, we, we as a body just got this today, like, on Friday. So, um, I, I just don't think this is like a one and done kind of thing.
Um, I'm not certain how to, how to proceed from here. Um, if somebody has a particular motion in mind that they would like to make.
Can we actually split it up then? Because I think, from the earlier comment, I think there are two titles, which I think we're pretty clear on and there aren't any issues on it. Yeah, so could we make a motion to move forward with the proposed amendments to the Title fourteen and fifteen?
I, I would be in agreement with that. Yeah, I think that's a good little round, so we're only really focusing on, yeah, Title two.
Do we have a motion?
So, I'm sorry, the motion was Commissioner Sadi, or is? I, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you were suggesting the motion and she, okay.
But should we develop the whole motion? Yeah, like, before we vote on it, yeah. So like, part of it is, yeah, let's go ahead and approve those two sections. And now we have to come up with.
Well, so I think my proposal was to make two separate motion, uh, separate motions.
Oh, two separate motions?
Yes, not, not one gargantuan one, but there's one first motion to just approve the first two titles, which we had no issue on. And then we need to figure out what the motion is for the second one. Because I don't think we're clear yet on that.
Okay, so should we take care of fourteen and fifteen?
That's, yeah, and then, okay, so uh, making a motion to approve the amended changes to Title fourteen and fifteen, as suggested by staff.
Clarifying question, um, you're recommending approval of those changes to the council? Because that's, that's, that's the verb, okay.
Yes, recommending the approval.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, Margaret, would you like to take the role on that motion?
Well, can we, since we have, can we deliberate a little bit before we take a roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
Because I think the challenge for me is, I'm okay with that, parcelizing this.
Yeah.
Chapter two is a little bit murky, but it puts staff in an awkward spot because they can't take this to the council unless it's chapter two as well, right? So if we want to bring back chapter two, we're going to have to, there may be ripple effects with these other two titles or chapters. Yeah, that's where it gets to be a little bit funky. And we're limited in what edits we can, well, we're not limited, we can make whatever edits we want. I just don't feel qualified to make the edits.
Well, we're not making edits, in my mind, we're making, we're making recommendations. Sorry, well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, in my thoughts about what that motion would be, there wouldn't be edits, there would be recommendations for what needs to be followed up with. Because I think that's probably as far as we're going to get tonight. Based on what other, other people's comments were.
Right, and, and would that involve a motion or a request to staff that we come back having done more planning commission homework, uh, and revisit the issue of the bylaws and section two?
I think, in my mind, either, I mean, I'm looking at the time, like, it could. I think, in my mind, either, I mean, I'm looking at the time, like, it could be either.
To the chair, it'd be my recommendations that you place a recommendation to council in terms of what your thoughts are on title two, and what you would recommend for them to, to do, that allows staff to actually bring that item forward to council with the planning commission recommendations on title two, given that 14 and 15 are presumably on track. But then also council and their recommendation, or their evaluation that can deliberate how they, they choose in terms of what to bring forward. So I would say, I would look for, for staff's perspective and, and, and agree to Commissioner Mercado's. Very difficult in terms of saying, what does council want to do? I'm not sure exactly what it is, that it's in this directive or approach. But then I do believe giving your recommendations on title two, which is within the council purview, would help, so.
I, I think that the sense appears that we're not prepared to make recommendations on section two. And if what you're suggesting is that, then that holds up the whole ball of wax, I think we have to hold up the whole ball of wax.
Or we don't make a recommendation.
Right.
Right, we can do that too.
That's.
Put staff in an awkward spot.
Yeah, we're not, we're not ready to make a recommendation, because we have to bake it. So, like, once we, once we recommend it, then, like, we don't really know the impact of what we're doing. So I don't feel comfortable recommending anything to city council tonight, until, you know, we can meet again next week, we can meet again in two weeks, we can make it quick. But I don't, you know, again, like, I just don't feel comfortable being rushed.
So, so what, what, what would be a proposed timeline? Because I think one of the recommendation could be, we could have like an off schedule, like, study session to, like, provide that recommendation, because I think if, I, I don't think that council would be opposed for us to come back, like, next week with a bit more preparation and just say, hey, well, let's, let's kind of pound through title two specifically, here are our recommendations, or sort of our, our things for council to keep in mind, and then pass that on in completion. I don't know if that's, if that would be possible for us to do at all, but I think maybe that would be, it seems like that might be where people might be more comfortable.
That would be the motion, right? Our motion would be to, you know, to have a study session in the next so many weeks, right? Could we make that, is that a motion? An ability to have a motion?
If, through the chair, it sounds like you may want to continue this item to a special meeting on a date certain to further discuss the details of title two. Is, I'm, I'm just trying to, and, and if that is what you're, I, if we go to a date certain, I don't believe we'd have to notice it. That's my, so it's a 15 day notice to do it in the paper, and so we're going to a date certain, I don't know off the top of my head, the special meeting has a different noticing issue, but that's, that's the one thing I would just leave out there.
I, I think we'd be happy going to a date certain.
I agree, and I think, nobody's reading the legal section anyway. I mean, people know now about it, because they got, you know, whoever's interested knew about it on Friday, so they're going to follow this. Those people will, will be here if they need to.
I would just add, if, when I look at chapter two, I don't see that there's, I have really no input. Like, it's, it, it's just describing what the planning commission is by adding these two members. So I just kind of want to highlight, like, I don't really, if we bring it back, I'm going to challenge my fellow commissioners, what's the goal of that discussion, right? Because when I read chapter two, it's pretty simple, they're just adding the, the two, talking about what the alternatives are. Now, do I think that's clear? Not really. Do I think it maybe needs to be cleaned up? Probably, but I don't know if it's really the planning commission's, like, I don't think that, as a commissioner, that's my job to clean that up. I can just advise staff, hey, I think chapter two, the edits align with your recommendation, I think the council can review that, I think there's some concerns with it, I don't have any edits to make, but I just think it's a little bit confusing. And that, to me, is, like, that's the best I feel like I can do. I'm happy to support, or abstain, if you guys want to bring it back, I just highlighting, when I read chapter two, I don't really know kind of what to play with it, and again, this isn't our code, so I'm also very hesitant to just start throwing stuff in there.
I don't think we, I mean, we're, like, our recommendations aren't necessarily going to be accepted, I mean, council may just tell us to pounce in. So I, so I, I think, I think to, to your concern, where, where I would say is that, I think that there is, even if it's not in our purview to make that call, that it's essentially going to be in the purview of this new planning commission to actually make those calls. I think it's still fair to provide inputs to council around, like, here's, you know, here are what our thoughts on, what the composition of the council might need to look like, that might be missed by this. These are some of the, you know, the edge cases that might need to be paid attention to. Here are some recommend, like, here are some recommendations on to how we might need to address things on the fly. And again, this might be stuff that they write on an old pair of tennis shoes, but I, I get the sense that people would feel more comfortable just providing that input, and if it's like an extra week, you know, I think, I think that's fair for a peace of mind perspective, and it doesn't hold stuff up too much. I think if this was like a, let's have six more meetings on this and, like, circulate this out to, you know, 10,000 people, that's a different story, but I think if it's another week of just, like, us reading through this doc, us laying out, like, here's all the stuff that's really unclear, I'm not sure that you guys really have a clear idea of this, so like, you know, here are some potential recommendations or landmines, et cetera. Staff obviously has their own inputs as well, but I think just the more minds that we just, like, highlight some risk areas, I think, you know, city council can kind of clean up whatever they want to do after that.
Yeah, and I think staff, you guys understand our concerns, so like, we do our homework on the bylaw, like, all those things that Commissioner Smootsie and we've all figured out, and then, I mean, obviously, there, you know what we need to address, so you can come and help us with certain things, and I think special meeting doesn't really have a lengthy staff report, you know, we're just trying to get this thing moving through.
Through the chair, I actually have serious, I'm confused, I am confused, I, um, I, uh, I, what I'm, as you're speaking, I'm like, okay, I need to bring something back next week. It's, I think you've been very articulate, each of you, about what you think title two should have that it doesn't have as drafted in your staff, in, in your packet. I think you have, it, it, I don't know what I can bring back in five working days to add further light to this. So that's, that's, I am looking for direction on what you would like staff to bring back. We won't have perfect objective design standards, we will not, so that can't happen. So we need to, what is it about title two that we can bring that we haven't brought that would be helpful to the commission and its deliberation?
I, I, I'm not sure that we're asking for anything more from staff.
Okay.
I think that what we're asking for is, is time to do our homework a little bit more thoroughly. Because I don't, it, it doesn't feel like we're comfortable making recommendations tonight.
I, I, and again, if I'm not trying to make you move on something you're not ready to move on, I'm, how do I serve this better, if I'm, I'm stuck, and I'm like, I don't know, I don't know. And Commissioner Sadi is like, I think staff heard it, it's like, staff did, but I don't have a.
No, I'm not saying, that's what I'm saying, like, you don't need, we don't need to have a report and all that stuff, we just need to come and have an opportunity, your homework, and then obviously, you know our concerns, so you can come back and kind of know, you know, like, dig in a little more, you know, it's not like, it should be, not be so much prep for you guys, you already have a 280 page report, right?
No, I, I think what we're looking for is just a continuation of this conversation. But we need more time to be a little bit more educated about how to proceed with this conversation. We, we could all stop and read the bylaws and keep this meeting going, but I don't think that's what anybody's interested in. So I think what we're looking for is coming back, say, next Tuesday, unless anybody objects to next Tuesday, with our having done more of our homework and feeling more comfortable in our own heads, in our own minds, about what recommendations we want to make to council.
Just for clarification, and this is related to the bylaws, for the planning commission bylaws versus title two.
Title, title two, well, and, and, right, so, so, and, and recommendations to council with regard to how to move forward with this combination process, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's one of, one of the outcomes that we're looking for tonight, is recommendations for us to council. And one recommendation is, it's just saying, yep, it's wonderful, go ahead. Your other recommendation might be, you know, we think that there should be, I don't know, three architects. And, and the council can say, no. But I, but I don't think that there are very, very many of us up here who are comfortable saying there should be three architects, or there should be no architects, or, I don't, I don't feel like we are comfortable making recommendations tonight. And with a week of thinking about the issue and thinking about the composition, and how that might interplay with the bylaws, we could conclude this conversation without more staff input.
I'll just clarify, I'm not available on Tuesday, so I will raise the issues I have in chapter two that I think should be discussed and would potentially be clarified through the bylaws or through here, that way I can just provide my two cents. One is, the several, so there's seven regular voting members, and then one from the four councils and three outlarge commissioners, okay, that, so there's seven. Then it talks about the two alternate members, doesn't really describe what the alternate member is, I don't know what that definition could be based off of, if there even needs to be, but that should be understood clearly, so that when we do the bylaws, the alternate member can understand their scope and responsibility, because you don't want to set somebody up for failure, right? Because if we're all here every meeting and that alternate is sitting there, twiddling their thumbs, and we're saying, thanks, I'd be pretty pissed after a year of doing that. The second is the design professional, there was great questions about what is the definition of that, that may be in the other chapters, I don't know. But it's not in chapter two, a reference where that, that, just that definition would be, I think clarity on that would be really helpful. And there's been some great ideas and suggestions, I think it's staff, it's whatever you guys need for that design professional, with the flexibility that we don't want to keep it too narrow. That's also going to play into the alternates and the hierarchy of the alternates. Are they architects, design professionals, or other, or can they be all? I would recommend all, with the hierarchy being established. Should that be in chapter two? Maybe, maybe not. But that should be a recommendation the council gets, based off of what we advise them, I would hope. What I'm seeing here sticks a little bit, but you guys can just say, no, we just want a bunch of architects. And to that point, right, the why two versus three, I think we should clarify in our recommendation to the council that says, the reason why staff is saying two versus three is for these, and we support that. That's the findings that I think would look very good when they go to make the code amendment, to show the justification, the substantiation for why this is a good upgrade on that. In case we get challenged or somebody says I disagree, those are the two that kind of jumped out at me. So I eat my words, I guess I did have comments, sorry.
All right, thanks for that, Aldo. So do we need to move to continue this meeting to Tuesday, July 18? Uh, June 18?
So I have one other thought through the chair, I have one other thought that I have no control over. This is a very popular room, I don't know if it's free next Tuesday.
Okay.
You know what I mean, there's a, a number of boards and commissioners for the city of San Rafael that meet, and I, we're always, your standing meetings are safe.
So, so two weeks from now, we're good?
Could we do it in a conference room if this isn't ready, available? Like, we have other, there are other, like,
Yes, we can.
Like, meetings up there, yeah.
Okay, so, so we, we could find a room, yes.
I, I wasn't aware of that, okay, great, it's ADA access, and it's how we have it on YouTube and all that, I don't know of every, how we would do that, but I believe the director has been through this before, so.
Okay. Okay, so do we need a motion, or, okay? Would somebody like to?
Here, I'll, this is Commissioner Smootsie, I'll make a motion for us to have a special, special meeting next Tuesday, June 18th, for a continuation of this present discussion, in which we will make our recommendations for title two.
I'll second that motion, should we have a time, or we'll just decide a time later? Yeah.
It would be best, through the chair, if you had a date and time.
So, so, June, June 18th, 7:00 PM?
I will second the motion.
Margaret, would you like to take the role on the motion?
Yes. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodby?
Yes.
Commissioner Sem.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Sadi?
Yes.
Chair Haberman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and so next, we'll move on to the director's report?
Yes, thank you, my report will be fairly brief, just update wise, I wanted to share that we actually have made new staff hires. That's something actually we've been working through for some time, and brought in two new principal planners. So a little higher depth of, of experience, especially for the type of projects we've been coming across. Recruitment pool is really challenging, so enough where we actually overfilled the positions in order to get the, the skill sets we were looking for. So I'm very pleased to have that in. One's already started, she's coming from the city of Sonoma, another one's actually come from the city of Oakland, so a little depth in, in their experience and background, they've actually adopted objective design standards for both their communities they've been in. So a lot of the things we're dealing with, they, they've come across already, and that's really one of the factors of really kind of bringing in that extra capacity to meet some of these things, the demands that the community is, is looking for and for us to address. Margaret, do you want to add anything on that? Also, we also brought, brought in new planning technicians or counter technicians, support that. We've had staff departures for various reasons as transition happens, so happy to report we have two new hires for that. So bringing back the capacity of the department to kind of meet the needs. In terms of programmatic pieces, I do want to highlight the brochure, it's actually on your, your dais. And this is a community economic development program that just launched, we presented this to city council at the last council meeting, which is our San Rafael GO program. So in essence, this is a branded program related to economic development and community development. How do we support businesses, small property, small businesses, large businesses and developers in navigating our process? Really what this is, is an enhanced customer service program, right? It's a marketing standpoint to say, if you're looking to do something in this community, please start here. And this is something that was really targeted as part of our economic development strategic plan, to kind of create a business attraction retention program, so really this is the, the manifesta, manifestation of that. This particular program, really think of it, you know, that's an economic GO program. It's, it's a targeted end, so you don't really need to know what it is to say, if, if I'm looking to do something in this city, you know, here's the, the, the website, here's the pieces, you know, they'll take care of you, go to the economic development GO program, our staff will follow up with you, fill out the form, we'll address it. It's just adding tools to our toolbox. As part of this two program, and it's on the community development website, is we actually brought in another site selection tool. So this is something that we, we get often, it's just, we're looking for space, I'd like to open a business, I want to develop something, I want to buy something, what's available in the, in the community? Having actually a resource tool that's self-service, it's a technology tool that people can utilize, and like, and please utilize the, the site selection tool, you can actually run reports on available properties. It's a data scrape tool, it actually looks at all listing, uh, listings within our brokerage, commercial brokerage, and actually allows them to understand that, so know what's available. Also, they can research, like, the market rents, sort of like in the comparables, is this a good deal, or is this not? Also, it gives you demographic data and like other, like, what's the next distance to the next bakery? It gives you kind of that, that self-help tools for, for business selection. And it's just kind of adding to, to kind of really what our approach is, and really trying to enhance the customer service and approachability of this community. So this is, is the manifestation of that. The other thing too is, it, it, sometimes it's been, what I've found is, for a lot of the community, they don't know how to address the, the city, like, hey, I want to do this project, I, I should call, you know, the planning commission, I should talk to the city manager, I should go to the mayor. This is actually a redirect tool. Hey, if you want to start, the best way is to go to the city's website and use the economic development GO program, so we have a capture. And, so it's not less of who you know, but there's actually a branded program that actually exceeds people. Like, so it will always be in the place, so if you didn't know where to start, you can always start here, and we can actually provide that service. The other thing too is, is also a data capture tool. How many inquiries did we get? You know, what was the outcomes from that? You know, what was the investment, what was the job creation? So we can actually start to report on the investment this community's already made within our economic development, community development programs. So it really is trying to kind of raise it to the next level. But the basics of it, it really is a, a, an enhanced customer service tool. And that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, that's great, thank you very much, anybody have any questions for director? Or any communications that they would like to?
I do have one.
Okay.
So, June 28th is going to be my last day as a San Rafael resident. I'll be moving to Cape Town, South Africa.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Wow, well, very exciting. We will miss you.
Yeah, but you're zooming into meetings.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll set that up.
I'm not sure it's in the bylaws.
Okay, if there are no more communications from commission members, then we will adjourn the meeting. Okay, thanks very much, everybody, meeting is adjourned. Yeah.